Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
Good evening. I would like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners regular meeting to order. Would the group stand please for the pledge allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Clerk, take the roll please.
Commissioner Semasko, here. Commissioner Tami, here. Commissioner Hydeman, here. Commissioner Riley, here. Commissioner Rushing, here. Commissioner Greathop, here. Chairman Ball, here.
At this time, I'd like to move to appoint Commissioner Phil Greathop to temporary care for the June 19 Board of Commissioners regular meeting.
Motion support discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We have some additions and deletions to the agenda.
This time, I'd like to move to the additions, deletions, changes to the agenda. The additions will be the introduction of the city officials as the first item under new business, Marine City Economic Development Presentation as the second item under new business, professional service agreement with the Great Lake Stock and Doors as item 11O, professional service agreement with Gardener Voice, both I believe, panel partitions as item 11P, finally, 2014 Marine Safety Program Grant Agreement as item 11Q.
Second. The motion of support, any discussion on the additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval? Moved in that we approve the agenda as amended?
Support.
And supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on. Minutes of previous meetings, minutes from 5:14, or 5:15 rather for the regular commission and 6:05 for the standing committees.
Chair and I would move that we approve of minutes from the 5:15-14 commission meeting and the standing committee, one from 6:15-14, be approved and filed.
All right.
Second?
I have a second motion and a second to approve the two minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
At this time, I have a couple of proclamations that I would like to present. I'm not sure of the order here. I have one from the county, that's the big one, no, it's the small one, and then I have a big one from the state, so I don't know, is it going to be the state first? Does anybody know the proper order to do these things?
Tell me first.
Tell me first, I would say. That would be my guess. All right, these are to recognize Mr. Gordon Burkhard Jr. Mr. Burkhard, if you would come up here please and find a place to stand real close to me, okay? And I'll read these things and I'll present them to you and we'll have a little fun with this thing. This is a proclamation recognizing Gordon Burkhard Jr. and Lumberjack Building Centers for 50 years of service. Whereas Gordon J. Burkhard Jr., being a forward-thinking man, purchased two lumberyards in the summer of 1964, one in Algonack, the other in New Baltimore. In 1965, a showroom store was added to his Algonack location, which would become the first of many hardware showrooms for his company. And whereas several years later, a store was added in Marine City and in 1973, three locations were united under one name to become Lumberjack Building Centers Incorporated. In response to a growing demand for product and services, Lumberjack Building Centers continued to grow and locations were also opened in Marine City and in St. Clair. And whereas with Gordon's belief in quality products and exceptional service, the range of products and services offered at each Lumberjack location is virtually unlimited. From the simplest of home projects, lawn and garden, to renovations and roofing, you can be confident that Lumberjack is everything to get your project done. Whereas Lumberjack Building Centers are a locally owned business committed to serving, Gordon and the Lumberjack family are dedicated and involved in all the communities surrounding each of his locations. From festivals, parades, and fundraisers, to schools, clubs, and the military, they are there in many ways. Now therefore be proclaimed that the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners does hereby adopt this proclamation extending our deep appreciation to Gordon Burkhard Jr. and the Lumberjack Building Centers for their dedication and commitment to excellence here in St. Clair County. Proclaim this 19th day of June 2014, signed Jeffrey Bone, chairperson, Steve Semasko, vice-chairperson, and Carl Tommy and Howard Hydeman, Tom Riley, Dave Rushing, Phil Greathop, commissioners. Gordon, my congratulations.
Thank you.
You. I'm not going away, it's funny, it's not over yet. This is, this is just bigger, I don't think it's longer, but, but we have, we have to go through these things. It's the law. All right, I have State of Michigan special tribute to Gordon Burkhard Jr., Lumberjack Building Centers Incorporated. Let it be known, that is, with deep appreciation of the significance of this milestone, that we commend Lumberjack Building Centers Incorporated and honor Gordon Burkhard Jr. as they mark the 50th anniversary of the founding of this exemplary name. We are proud to recognize the important role that this enterprise has played in contributing to both the economic developing of the area and the lives of countless citizens. In the summer of 1964, Gordon Burkhard, a man of considerable foresight and determination, purchased two lumberyards, Algonack lumber in Algonack and Anchor Bay lumber in New Baltimore. In the following year of 1965, the Algonack store was built next to the lumberyard. This would be the first of many hardware showrooms for the company. Since its founding, Lumberjack has become a vital element in helping Michigan grow and adapt to needs in commerce and all aspects of life in St. Clair County. This success in maintaining competitiveness during an era of many challenges is the direct result of the commitment of the people of this company and their ability to work together to offer the best in products and services over the years. Even as our cyclical Michigan economy has presented obstacles to growth and stability, Lumberjack Centers Incorporated has sustained itself through dedication and innovation. In looking back over 50 years of Lumberjack's history, it is clear that this name has set course with a continuing look to the future. While the changes to the marketplace dictate many of the decisions for any good company, Gordon Burkhard Jr. and the Lumberjack Building Centers Incorporated have also demonstrated the importance of looking beyond the balance sheet alone to include the ideas of its people and the roles of the company to community life in making choices. We are grateful for all this enterprise and what has contributed to the St. Clair County and to all of Michigan. In special tribute therefore, this document is signed and dedicated to commemorate the 50th anniversary of Lumberjack Building Centers Incorporated. We salute Gordon Burkhard on his happy occasion and wish him well in the future, signed Dan Lowers, State Rep. from the A-1st District, Phil Pablo, State Senator from the 25th District, and Rick Snyder, Governor, State Commissioner. Gordon, congratulations. Would you like to say anything at all, you've made?
It's interesting how we started up here in Marine City. We, I was friends with, and still am, Phil, Daniel, and we always had those afternoons at the little bar, and we were looking for a railroad society store up here on Shark Hills, and lo and behold, Almond Wester, he made us a deal on the property. The property we bought from Chris Craft, and so we just started digging in foreign cement, and we had that store built and ready to go by November of the same year, '65. But the whole community here, with all the stores in the county, and we appreciate everything from everybody here. We have good personnel up here, and we aim to keep going, and it's a lot of fun, but thank you very much for everything.
Gordon, who do you have here with you tonight?
Mark Thompson, he's on the council in Algonack, and Randy Muser, our buyer, lumber buyer, hardware buyer, and Donna runs, manages the Marine City store.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you everybody.
I would make motion and proclamation recognizing Gordon Burkhard Jr. and Lumberjack to approve.
Motion in support to approve those proclamations, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, keep things moving, let's take a look at the consent agenda items A through I. Take a look at it gentlemen, if there's one that you want to pull out and talk about, let us know, otherwise, we'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I would move that we approve items 7A through 7I on a consent agenda.
I have a motion in support to accept agenda items 7A through 7I. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Report of standing committees, Commissioner Semasko will start down there with you, you have got anything you want to?
No report.
No report. Commissioner Tami?
Commissioner Hydeman, what have you got for us? I've got kind of a lengthy report.
Whoa.
Prepared, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yesterday, we had a metropolitan planning meeting, and I talked to David Struck, our Director of Metropolitan Planning, about any ideas in the works for the art and property that we just purchased. And he is right now doing research about applicators throughout Michigan, how they operate, what works, what doesn't work, and so he's putting all that together with some other ideas before he ever starts getting public input. But he's looking forward to setting up somewhere or another way to start getting public input regarding that, that property and any opportunities there. I just want you to remind everyone that a little bit of the history of the South Ward of what used to be the worst place in Port Huron, but back in the late 40s, when the city-county building burned down, they decided to clear out some of the first ward, and that's where they put the sewage treatment plant, probably not one of their better decisions, but back then, you know, as they said, we turned our back on the river, and that's where they put the sewage treatment plant. But they also built the jail on what I consider one of the really prime properties, and probably the only one that remembers this, Chair Bone, that about, oh, when we moved out the jail, probably February 2008 or 2006, I recommended that the old jail property be put up for economic development, and the Times Herald did up an editorial saying they thought that was a good idea. I think that's something we need to reconsider and, and look at that. That's a beautiful piece of property with a fantastic view of the St. Clair River, and if we can put it back on the tax rolls, I think we'll reconsider it.
Is the land bank involved in this in any way?
No.
Okay. Could they be?
That's a good question, I don't know.
We've had several meetings, I can't tell you whom, why, and why, but there's been a lot of discussion of just multiple properties in downtown, redevelopment.
Now, if we can put it back on the tax roll, I'm for that, especially if we declare it as excess property and county doesn't need it anymore.
Awesome. Anything else?
That's it.
Commissioner, Commissioner Bone?
None at this time.
Commissioner Riley?
Yeah, I got just a couple things. Our emergency management breakfast, after that, I always have a fundraiser, and the fundraiser this year went to the bridge builders, and through the afternoon of golfing from the people that wanted to come in and play, and also the raffle stuff that FOP helped me with, as we ended up giving on the 28th of May, I ended up giving from the raffle and everything going on, $1,989 to bridge builders, which they were extremely pleased with that to help their budget out.
Tom, will you tell the audience a little about Bridge Builders? Some people may not know who that is or what that is.
Well, Bridge Builders is up on Sixth Street really, and Bridge Builders do a lot for the community, for seniors, they do a lot for kids, there's just a lot of various parts to their, their type of things that they do for the community. And I know the church that I go to, we give them the building they're in for a dollar a year, and which is Grace Episcopal Church, and that's, every year, we try to look for a fundraiser and who helps the community, what type of organization, from the Salvation Army to many down, we've done Kids in Disgust, we've done the Seatbelt Contest, but Bridge Builders this year was really suffering for dollars, big time, from budget cuts and stuff that they had, and there's just a lot of varied things that they do, there's a tremendous large amount, but it's a good community thing, it's helping families, helping children, and it's, it was a good cause, and we felt this was the year to do something like that, it was recommended by the committee that I chair, so that's what we did. So the, the amount of money we gave this year might sound small, but they were extremely pleased with, almost $2,000 to them.
Thank you, Tom. What else you got?
One other thing I've been working on the last couple weeks, and today I had another meeting this morning at the landfill, the landfill buildings have been heated for ever, I'm going to say, with propane. And I worked for Semco for many years, and I'm not plugging Semco, but they have the gas utility in the company, in, in the area, and, but I was out there for a meeting one day and noticed that we had propane, and I questioned it, and I talked to Bill, I met with Matt Williams out there, and I've got a price to run gas lines on there, which is about, with the mains and services that have to be put on properties, it's about almost a two-year payback, but within that two years, based on the propane cost versus the natural gas cost, it's going to be extremely good, it's going to help the big budget for them in a long way. The cost of the natural gas versus propane is about a third is what it's going to be, so it's a payback, almost immediately starting, so I'll have that, it's all put together, I'm waiting, it'll be brought up, we'll try to bring it back to the board for a board approval in the first meeting in July, and we're getting all the papers drawn up today, that's why I was out there, and we measure everything off, you know, right where we're at, so just to bring you up to speed on where we stand with that.
Good, appreciate it, everything to save the money is good.
Just a little comment, I want to give Tom a plug, because I spent a lot of time out at the landfill, did a lot of stuff, and for the longest time, everybody, that was always under the assumption that that was a transmission line, correct me if I'm wrong?
That's correct, that's a Matt line.
Yeah, and that, that you weren't able to tap that line, so, called an old wise tale, I guess, but Mr. Riley, having his experience, he was able to check into that, and that was not the case, and that they were able to use that line to tap that, so Tom, I give you a lot of credit, and you know, you're obviously, your gas experience with Semco, and you're just going to pay dividends for us.
Thanks, Jeff, it's a...
Pay dividends? Pay dividends of him, that's what I...
I don't pay no dividends on that, but it's a, it's a good move, it's just one of those things that was, nobody paid a lot of attention to, because they thought it was transmission line, couldn't tap that, but it is in distribution, and I knew that, because that was my field for years, and I just happened to be standing there looking at it one day and thought, what the heck is this all here for?
Good, we appreciate the input on that, thank you. Anything else?
No, sir.
Commissioner Rushing?
Not tonight.
Taking a pass? I will take a pass tonight also. Let's move to item nine on the flip side of your agenda, citizens wishing to address the board, do we have any citizens wishing to address the board?
Good evening, everybody, to the board, guests and citizens of St. Clair County. My name is Phil Craft, I'm the constituent services representative, Congresswoman Candace Miller, and it's great to be back in Marine City. I was just here with the Congresswoman two weeks ago for a great tour and a great presentation from Marine City, and actually showing the message of thanks from the Congresswoman she asked to come today, and Mr. Gaver for the tour and the presentation, the mayor for the hospitality for allowing us into your city to see what's going on, and to the clerk for also being there in your hospitality, and also a thank you to Commissioners Phil Greathop and Commissioner Jack Bone, who also attended the tour, and it was great to have that sort of cohesion between the city, the county, and the federal level, all come together for Marine City, and also to the rest of the board, Congresswoman, asking me to thank you all for being there, you know, to help both, both ways, she really appreciates it and how you have become sort of a regional entity here, and it's great to see the progress that you have all been making, she notices and she appreciates and she says to keep up the good work. And I also wanted to say that our office, we're always available to help out with the citizens, and the board, you all know that we're available anytime, day or night, our office is located in Shelby Township, which is a little bit of a height, but you can reach us by email, phone, snail mail, anything, and I'm around too in the comb in St. Clair County, so probably see me driving around all over the place, but I kind of represent her well here, so anything that citizens need, feel free to ask us, you know, if you have any questions on, you know, federal issues, that's what we're here for. Our website is candacsmiller.house.gov, and also sign up for our e-newsletter, we send out random updates just about things, the major things that are happening, such as, you know, the E10s or, you know, things that are real pertinent to the area, and also our phone number is 586-997-5012, and I just want to thank you all and to you there.
Thank you, Phil. Thank the Congresswoman for us too, for her kind words.
I will.
Any other citizens wishing to address the board tonight? Any unfinished business? I see none. Moving into new business, first thing I would like to do is call on the mayor, Mr. Ray Skatarcik. Mr. Mayor, if you would take the podium and introduce who we have from the commission here today and say a few words should you like?
Sure. I'd like to welcome all to the city, I know this is the first time I've seen quite a few of you, so I don't know how familiar you are with Marine City, but I hope you take a little bit of time after the meeting to tour downtown and see how all of our placemaking efforts have been paid off. I know the county department does some of them, like early property rehab projects, the side programs, they've all done a wonderful thing to bring life to our downtown, and anybody that's familiar with the city, the last eight years has really come around and changed, so welcome to the city, I'm very proud of you, as I know everybody else is. The commissioners in attendance today in the front row, we have Commissioner Lovett, Commissioner Avery, and Commissioner Edrich.
So, you know, early on, I was, I was told to put down a list of concerns, so I spent like the last week working on a big list of concerns, and then I walked in today and I found out I'd be usurped by our city manager, who was one of the presentation points, and I was told to keep it really brief.
How long was this list?
It was, it was three months.
All right. You and I'll get together, we'll talk about it privately.
I do have to say, I have been on complaint about the county a little bit, I've been, I've done it here at our meetings, I've complained about, been feeling a little bit neglected on the southern end of the county here. In fact, at one meeting, I made the mistake of referring to us as the redheaded stepchild. Wouldn't you know it, that in the front row, there was a redheaded stepchild. And I got hecked with that, and I heard a lot of it for the rest of the meetings. So, primary concerns for me, you know, really, it's revenue and taxation, just like everybody Where the county can help, I think, is at the state level, I think you all know that the state's going to be naming out its revenue sharing because of loopholes that's found in every minute. That money that's owed to the northern cities and other cities for this year would have balanced our budget for us. Instead, we had to cut another $180,000 out of it. So, that's one of my primary concerns, and if you can read for us in that regard, I think it's greatly appreciated. The other thing that keeps me up at night, and I never really thought about it too much before I got to city politics, is the, is the challenge that the cities have in competing with the townships. I was looking at the state tax rolls before this meeting, and there's, I think, eight cities in St. Clair County, something like that, and 25 townships, this includes a couple villages, and pretty much across the board, the, you know, the townships and the villages have a big advantage on us as far as the mill rates, and home mires are very sensitive to that, and it puts us at a great disadvantage. If you look at the mill rates in cities, they're all pretty competitive, we're within a couple of mills, that's what I would say, we used to be on the higher end of that, we kept a few mills in the office, and it's now right below that, but, you know, I think everyone would agree that the cities are the lifeblood of the county, not cities, you know, as you put it, the townships that cluster around the cities, that take advantage of the cities, but, you know, those home set buyers, the single-family investments that are being made more in the townships, state management or cash rates. People investing in the cities, they seem to be your income-type investors, so our cities are becoming, you know, heavily weighted with rental and income profit. I don't think this is a real good scenario for the health of the county. I know that the commissioners appreciate the value of cities, because of all the efforts according to, of course, the Hyde River and that bad, or the smaller, smaller cities where economic advantage too, and anything that can be done in regards to evening out that, maybe with rent and sharing or something else, but that's not a kind of work, so that's all I have, that's the list of my concerns that I'm going to share with you, I know the city manager has a great presentation showing all the things we've been going on here in Marine City, and I'm going to turn the mic over to him.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I should have shared with that, right?
Well, that's fine, you go ahead and do that, I'm in your chair anyway, so.
All right.
John, you're on.
John, why don't you give a little preference on what John's...
Yeah, what John, what John is actually going to do, he's going to give you a little slide presentation, we were here, it was two weeks ago, and John had put together a really, really nice presentation, so impressed me that we actually called him night before last and said, can you do it again for us tonight? We want to get it out for the entire county to see all the good things that are happening here, and it involves business, and it involves the loft building, and all the things that are going on, the exciting things that are happening, and there's a conceptual thing or two out there that I think, will you have a slide in there?
Yeah.
Okay, we've got a conceptual slide that we're going to show you on a, on a possible development thing, that I think you're going to find extremely exciting, I was hoping that a couple people would be here, but I don't see them that are involved in this also, so Jeff, did you want to jump in on that a little?
Yeah, I just want to talk a little bit about, maybe even address some of the stuff you had discussed, right? We have a group that meets on a regular basis, we call it our Blue Meets Green Group, which is a cross-section of people from all over the county, and I would really encourage, you know, perhaps more participation in that, and I, I hear you, what you're talking about, the, you know, the downriver, people don't pay attention to you, so on and so forth, you know, I've heard that before, but we don't exclude anybody from this group, okay? And really what it gives an opportunity to do is, John made the presentation to the group at the last Blue Meets Green Group, we actually head down at the river here and had a big meeting regarding it, we had a follow-up meeting with a ton of legislators and a lot of economic development folks down at the Snub Theater, and John did such a, the presentation is that impressive that we said, bring them in here tonight. What I'm trying to, trying to, I guess reinforce is participate in those meetings, and it's, it almost becomes a public awareness, I mean, a lot of times, as county officials, unless you're out telling your story on a regular basis and telling it on a bigger audience, do we really know what perhaps is going on in certain areas? And I just, I just would say that that's very important to do that and participate, and I think what John has, and I'm a St. Clair guy, I've been there my whole life, and I've been in Marine City Gar Burger 300 times, so I'm down here, you know, plug for guards, and I've been down here and I have really seen your downtown just take shape, but it's critical mass now, it's one, this started, then that happened, then that happened, and this happened. It's one, this started, then that happened, and that happened, and this happened. You guys got some great things going on. Candace Miller called me on Monday to just chit chat about a bunch of stuff, and she was so impressed with this presentation, to echo, you know, what she had said. And I think it'd be very interesting to hear John's presentation, so.
Hey, John, you are?
Okay. Now I've got big shoes to fill. This kind of covers a lot of ground in Marine City. We're going to kind of talk about the history a little bit. And basically, what we're promoting is places of prosperity. Marine City has a vision of being a center place for tourism in St. Clair County. And one of the reasons we look at that as the centerpieces, we have a Canadian border crossing that comes here as well. So we have a good draw, 365 degrees. Clean riverfront, traditional downtown. We didn't get sucked into the urban renewal. Historic charm dating back over 100 years. This is just some of the shots I got from our museum back when it was really, or really new. Welcome to Riverfront Parks, with a, obviously, a killer view, and pretty normal for most other cities up and down the river. Cultural destination within St. Clair County. We have our Old City Hall, which is over 100 years old. We have the Snug Theater, and as you'll see later on, we have an additional theater that's going to be coming in before the end of the year. Many shopping and dining places that are relatively new, and these happened in the last five years. So, we hadn't even bought it out yet, and we were starting to build some momentum. Historic lighthouse, even though it's not originally from here, it's been here since the 50s, or late 40s, early 50s. A public beach that's well-used, and, like I mentioned before, an international ferry crossing, which has really brought in a lot of economic development. When you talk to our stores and businesses in town, somewhere around the 40% mark is coming from King Road. So it's a, it's a big number. We intend to build on this momentum by adding recreational boat docks. We're looking at some, a plan to use some transition, our transient boat docks, capitalizing, again, on the international ferry traffic. Expansion of the bridge to Bay Trail. We're going to actually try to bring a leg downtown, since we put in a new bridge in the south, we actually have a gateway now to come in from that direction, and expansion of some of our cultural amenities. We think Marine City has untapped potential, can move forward as a place with prosperity. Economic downtown revitalization, economic development, and I'm just going to go back about five years on this. Marine City Fish Company, very popular place, especially if you come to see a show at the Snug. If you don't have a reservation, you're not going to get in, especially on the weekends. Sweet Tooth, now nobody would have thought, an ice cream and candy store would have made it, and Todd does an excellent job, he just breaks them. Quilting Dreams, another great addition, and this house was almost ready to come down, and she bought it, it's all quilting, she has five little apartments up above, they rent for the weekend, and I have the point of standing that she's booked to buy here and made a special note. But again, it's bringing people in town. Roast It, another successful small coffee shop. The Snug Theater, I know most of you've heard about it, have a great production going on right now, $40 tickets, get online and get them. GT Graphics is another one that came in within the last five years. Hut Eight, another store, and this is all in our traditional downtown. St. Clair County Mental Health took one of our buildings over and moved in and moved their operations in there. And we have Supes now. This is out on King Road, but they're related to the high quality of anybody else. So, this is all that's happened in the five years, and I guess the best part of that is, is this has all been complimentary to the existing businesses. They're not in competition with them, they're something different than what we already have. Downtown revitalization, facade improvements, just briefly go through the completed ones. 110 Broadway was a commercial storefront, started out like that, they wanted to redo the bottom, ended up with the stone facing on it, on the front and back, or the two sides rather. 324 Water Street, that's where the graphics place is, that whole facade, and they had added the second floor, and Mishna picked up the facade for both floors, even though it was a new addition to the second floor. Anita's Place Restaurant, that was all redone with energy efficient window doors, awnings and what have you, a lot of tough pointing to the brick. And Riviera Restaurant is probably the most dramatic change out of all of them, looked like that originally, turned out to look like this when it was done. So, that's what's happened with regards to facade improvements. In-progress facade improvements, we have three additional buildings that we're getting sometime in July, we only have release of funds. The old car dealership at Broadway and Water, looks like that right now, that's what's proposed for it when it's done. That should happen in September, by September, October. The Snug Theater, that's what it looks like now. This is what they're proposing, it is approved, so it's going to actually have a marquee, and it's going to look like a whole theater again. And Riviera Restaurant, since it faces the river, that's also considered a facade, it's getting uplift on the back of it. So that building, which sits right next to the ferry, is going to be a very nice looking building when somebody comes across. Future facade improvements, we're looking at the Riverbank Theater. I talked about the second theater, they bought a bank building, and they're in the process of remodeling that right now. We're getting an idea what that will look like a little bit later. We're always looking for the next facade. I know I have at least two other property owners that are talking to me right now, so I'm going to try to bundle another package of three together. And that's going to give us somewhere over a dozen buildings that are going to have a complete facelift in the downtown when we're finished. And Mishna and MDC know our success, so they're willing to send more money this way, because we know the projects are good. Marine City, we're approaching about $650,000 in downtown facade improvements that we've managed to secure already. Who are we doing? Now we're going to talk a little bit about downtown revitalization through rental rehab. I guess, if you want to really make your city viable, vibrant again, you have the people living here, okay? And where I look now at a city, I go, where can you get people to live close to the downtown area? Because for every person here that's living down there, they bring about one and a half to two people with them on a regular basis. So just think what that does for your economic development, not only your tax base, because you're going to get something advantage by taxes. 110 Broadway has two apartments. Anita's started with two, added three more, for a total of five. Riviera Restaurant put two in, and the Snug Theater, which we had an open house, and we're going to introduce everybody to this, has three additional ones. This is just a little opening of the...
Michigan State Housing Development Authority, glad to be here in Marine City, grateful for the county, for the county, we give money to every rural county in the state, CDBG money, to redevelop Black Rand, and they chose to do a rental rehab program, and this building, which I haven't seen yet, I look forward to, is part of that program. So we're glad to help to revitalize the downtown here. We're very interested in helping downtowns across the state become greater places to live, so, thank you. John Stewart, I'm the property owner with my wife Victoria, my son Liam. We'd just like to thank everybody. My wife said, just take a big breath and say thank you. It's nice to see the community, the state, the city, Marine City, come together and help put this project together. We wouldn't have been able to do it without them, and thank you very much.
Hey, Captain River. City manager of Marine City, it's taken us a while to get this far, and when you get up to see the apartments, you're going to be really impressed with what's been done up there, and what we can do in the future for Marine City. Like Dan said, we're looking for other opportunities, other buildings. I know John's already approached me this morning and said, I'm ready to do two more. So, we need to take advantage of this funding that's out there, and take advantage of really developing Marine City back into a traditional downtown and a good family atmosphere for the local area. Thank you. This is just how one of the apartments turns out. When they're done, they're gorgeous, highly energy efficient, very low maintenance and what have you. He happens to have three of them now, you can look out the back window and see the boats go down the river, so he has no trouble keeping them rented. Right now, out of the ones we do have done, I believe there's still one that's vacant, and I know they've got somebody to go in it, they're just waiting for paperwork to go Future rental rehab projects, we've currently spent about $750,000 on that program down here, developing the ones we have. We can easily support six to eight more new ones, and then we can start looking at the existing ones to see what we can do to rehab those back into something that's very energy efficient and more upstate. Let's talk a little bit about industrial revitalization, and I'm, just like I said, I'm going to look back about five years. Rockford Carving, moved from Illinois with 20 employees, major supplier of components to Gibson Power. They do all of the pearl inlays and a lot of the special tuning components and what have you, and their biggest customer is Gibson Power, and they are doing quite well with us. They moved into this building, it was a vacant building by Dersky, five years ago, for this time. They also brought with them Great Lakes Army Surplus, with two employees, and they moved into the building right next door, they're basically an internet mail service that is run through Rockford Carving. Erickson Tyneown bought two additional buildings that are empty, one on Chartier and one on Dersky, one is their research and development, and another one is for storage and warehousing for shipping. So, what's been nice about it is, the buildings were deteriorating, they weren't being maintained, and the new owners came in, and everything just got screwed up, and then it all looks great again. Trine Industries is a division of Rockford Carving, three locations, they've bought this series of buildings, basically to use as infomators in storage, they have several small businesses that are working on that. They have another cluster of buildings on the other side of Parker, down at Chartier, that they are also looking to run out or utilize like that as well. West Creek Industries is a power coatings company, they bought a building on Chartier as well, is in a five-year non-compete clause, that's getting ready to run out, so I'm expecting that to start to take off here by the end of the year, because it's the last conversation I'm in. All of that's been great for Marine City. What's going to happen in the future? We have on the books, at least, a mini storage that's going in as a greenfield site on a piece of property on King Road. Total rehab of the Tagalong Trail Park. We put the water and sewer caps in that it needs, he's starting to do the work with the new water and sewer lines, and basically, all of those are going, and new, brand-new units are going to be coming in. So, we're excited, I'm excited about that, that's for sure, because it's been kind of a nice work for a long time. Winery Sales in the university, and I say it's a university, it's in progress right now, but they will actually teach you how to make wine, model it, and take it home. So, that's next to the Snug Theater. River Place Pavilion, is a pavilion that's going on a vacant lot downtown. I see a state that's wanting to start the footings. Basically, they want to do high-end art during the summer, mostly like May through October. They'll have, I believe, 10 or 12 vending stands in there, and a small serving area and what have you. But it's not going to be related to antique or stuff like that, so, sounds good for that. Riverbank Theater downtown, that's what it currently looks like right now, that's going to open in December, and this is what it's going to look like when it's finished. This is being done with private funding, because the only thing I'm going after for this building is facade. This is one of the buildings in the next group of facade, this next facade project that I'm going to put together. They're going to put two apartments on top, go ahead and be funded, they want to put a third story on top that you can actually get to with an elevator, and hopefully, we'll find a river license, and they want to serve your line up there, and they're adding it as part of the theater. The theater will be on the main level, it will seat 200 people, and it will run shows in conjunction with the Snug. The marketing plan that the firm has had is just outstanding, they're excited about it. This should open in the year of December, I'm not sure if the facade will be all complete, but they're planning on showing it in December of this year, so this is moving at the speed of life right now. Expansion of the riverfront infrastructure, we're looking at a transit Marina project that we currently have the okay to go forward on through the DNR, and we're also in the process of doing a feasibility study for a boutique hotel, somewhere in the neighborhood of 30 to 35 rooms. We're looking at this particular location, this is the concept of what it may look like when it's done. We want to keep a key rest atmosphere on there, this is the, the potential investors I have would like to see it end up like this. Now, this is on the Dell River, so this is protected waterways, you can spend the night, you're two blocks away from the downtown area, watch the show, umpteen places to go for dinner. A lot of the Canadian customers would like to come into town and spend the night, because they like to eat in groups and see a couple of shows and what have you. And the theaters right now are drawing people from a 70-mile radius, so, we need something like this, and we think we can support it with the type of activity that's out there. We know that Marine City has untapped potential, can move forward as a place with prosperity. We also have the 300 Broadway project, and that's been around for quite a while, we've made great strides on the exterior of it, it's one of the items that speaks directly to our heritage and sense of place in the city.
The Marine City City Hall remains a grand structure, with a unique history rarely found in other Michigan towns. It is truly a living history that can be used for educational purposes. Construction specialists have been working on every step of the project to ensure measures were taken to preserve historical accuracy, and that any original building materials would be salvaged, cleaned, and reused when possible. While great strides have been made, there remains much more to be done as the Phase Two interior restoration provides a barrier-free entrance to the building on the south side, an elevator built near the old police desk near the tower for access to all floors, modifications to the auditorium level, and improved stairwell access. Marine City City Hall is currently listed in the National Register of Historic Places as of January 11, 1982. It is the first historic district in Marine City, with a city ordinance prohibiting its demolition under submission. It is also only one of the few city halls among the over 1,000 State of Michigan historical listings. Additionally, there were at least 45 Mason and Weiss similar buildings constructed in Michigan, and City Hall is one of only five remaining. While a completely new building would only last 30 to 50 years, this building could last 300 to 500 years or more with proper maintenance. The future of the restoration project is now at a critical crossroads, as we move onto Phase Two restoration for Marine City City Hall. A warming kitchen, up-to-color restrooms, a walking center, and elevator will help it return to the robust community center it was designed to be. Weddings, showers, fundraisers, as well as public meetings, will all be accommodated. The city offices will be state-of-the-art and able to be secured when the building is being used for community purposes. While the nonprofit group Friends of City Hall continues forward in the mission to raise funding and support, they need your important donations to ensure that more than just a building, but a piece of our history, stands in magnificent form for generations to witness and enjoy.
That's just a little background, it was really a nine-minute video, but I have short enough, because it goes into a lot of detail. There we go. We currently have a new resource development committee to guide the efforts in developing Marine City's future. That committee meets quarterly at the Guy Center. If anybody is interested in attending that meeting, just give me a call at my office, I'll let you know when the next one is. They usually run by an hour, and I'm real lively, and we cover quite a bit of ground as to where they are, which direction they're moving forward in their areas. The following are some high-priority initiatives developed by our resource development committee. We want to continue the placemaking and destination development that we talked about, and as you can see, we have some projects that will do that. Waterfront infrastructure development, when you look at both sides of us, we're in the middle. There's no real good Marina Refuge within 10 miles of Marine City either direction. There's some other, there's some minor ones there, but not real good ones. A wave finding and streetscape by Land and Sea, we just want to develop that whole concept. Marine City Pure Michigan Marketing Plan, we're going to keep continuing with that activity, we think there's going to be a great benefit from that. And then we also have the Old City Hall interior improvement. So these are our high-priority projects that we see as we move forward here. We're requesting that Marine City and the five initiatives, a state that become regional priorities. priorities, advancing several goals that tomorrow place in prosperity. We're just looking for your help. If you hear about something, call us, we'll go after it. Or, you know, if you can point any kind of help in our direction, whether that's money or whatever that looks like, we think we have projects that can easily fit some of those grant-type opportunities. We are interested in supporting marketing for loaner assets and for financial assistance and that kind of thing. I want to take any questions because I've gone through this question before.
Any commissioners have any questions or comments for John?
Well, not John, I just wanted to make a comment for the mayor. And prior to me being a county commissioner, I was a township supervisor for six years. So that was for Roddy Township and I represent just north of here, all the western side. So you see a redheaded stepchild, Steve Semasko can reflect to that too. Townships on the west side of that county, they feel the same way. They get reflected. And after being a township supervisor and county commissioner, and I really enjoyed being a county commissioner, I think this group of commissioners, they really get their hands, get in there and do work. I think you have very good commissioners with Phil Graytop down here. If you call him, he gets very involved. So I think that this board and what we've done in the last five years since I've been here four years, it's done a very good job, I think, as county commissioners. Rather go through, let us through a whole list for you. There's been a lot of improvements and money's, we're working on, say you met this mayor, potentially getting some work to help out in their city park down by the river in Cooley Monches, or potentially extending their park down there, which Phil Graytop will do for you. But I think the commissioners get very involved. Your concerns, I think, as it's standing throughout the county, so you're not the only one that's got redheaded stepchild.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Semasko.
I'd like to thank Commissioner Graytop, you for bringing the meeting down in Marine City. I've been a attorney in the county for 30 years, practiced in the District Court for many years, spent a lot of time at the restaurants downtown, little bars, lunches occasionally, things like that. And I've seen a tremendous improvement in the last, you know, 25, 30 years. It's nice to see the backdrop behind that, it seems like it's really accentuated, really rolling forward on master. Things like your Marine City place here that's got the Key West look and that's a family that's, I'm familiar with the river and how it's not utilized. It's really gonna put it to tremendous use that will attract people and not only voters that always come in this block and work like this, so I'd be thankful to hear that.
Thank you. Commissioner Hyden.
I guess I'm a little sensitive when, you know, as a county, we try to help when we can. And I've been on the Metropolitan Planning Commission for 10 years and it seems to me that Metropolitan Planning Commission, they were in stabilization fund, provided some of the funding for those apartments that went down here, right? And then you had a great shot of a beautiful waterfront beach. It's beautiful. And it just seems to me that in addition to the money, 25% that cities get, their share from Park and Rec Village, which enabled you to do some of that, in addition to that, Park and Rec also provided some of the funding for the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund match so that you could buy some of those waterfront properties.
Yeah, yes.
And so we have, when there's been an opportunity pitched in to work with Marine City and with Commissioner Graytop, I'm sure that will continue.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners have any comments? Commissioner Roddy.
The only comment I would have, over the years, I've spent off and on quite a bit of time down here. I worked real close with the fire department for many years doing training and responding down here to assist on fire scenes and investigation scenes. But I gotta admit, this is, you've done one whale of a job putting this program together and that kind of reminds me of some areas that I've traveled around to and I think if you could pull that off, that's fantastic. But your program, I'll tell you, is very good. It was interesting to me and I think you got a lot of potential for your city.
Thank you very much.
Just a quick comment I want to make. It's a great story to tell, it's a great presentation, public awareness, making, you know, global awareness. I know you've been working on that, John, and I can tell you sitting in this seat, that's really important. Your lobbyist that you hired is actually the county's lobbyist. They're on the team for us, they work on a lot of projects and I emphasize that because I think it's important that there's a lot of continuity between those two, so when you're looking for grant opportunities, so they're aware of what the county's actually doing. We're in meetings with them on a regular basis and I know that stems over to some of their efforts down here, so.
Good, thank you. Anybody else? Gentlemen, thank you. John, very nice presentation. Thank you so much for doing that for us. I've seen it twice now and I could probably see it again. Seems like I pick up something different every time. We're gonna move into our new business section and I want to give a little preface to this that it's gonna seem like we're gonna move through this very, very quickly. We've got A through Q. It probably won't take us 10 minutes to get through all of it, I'm just taking a guess, but I say that because all of the work has already been done, all the arguing and the fighting that we may want to do over some of these things has been done at the committee level. And so once it's done at the committee level, we send it up here and it pretty much gets approved without too much discussion. So if there is something in the area here that the commissioners want to talk about, we'll do that. If anybody in the audience has questions, see me afterwards or any of us afterwards and we'll certainly talk about it in depth with you. So let's move on to the first item of new business, 11A, the approval of county dispersments May 2014.
This time I would move to prove the county dispersments were made in 2014 in all of $19,290,650,000. Support.
I have a motion to support, any discussion? All in favor? All right. I'll do a roll, let's do a roll call vote on that one.
Commissioner Semasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman.
Yes.
Commissioner Tannen.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyden.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Chairman Graytop.
Yes. All right, moving on to Item B, the Commission on Aging Appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to appoint John Hisgroff to the Commission on Aging, representing District Four for the remainder of a three-year term expiring 12/31/14.
Support.
I have a motion and two supports. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, the Library Board Reappointment.
The Library Board will actually be able to do that.
The Commission on Aging. Library Board Reappointment.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that the commission appoint David Wood to the Library Board, who is responsible to be representing District One, which includes our library, which is where I live, is where it falls on. To the Library Board, provide your term starting August 26, 29.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item D, 11D, St. Clair County Library System Closing Request.
This time I'd like to move, this time I'd like to move to approve the library closing request as presented.
I have a motion to support to close the library on the given days that they requested for some in-service and a few other things. Any discussion or questions? Commissioner Rushing.
Just so there's no misunderstanding, the library is opposing these specific days that they're being proposed. Just so there's no misunderstanding.
Thank you for the clarification, sir. All right. No other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Item 11E, the Airmac Contract Renewal for the Intervention Center.
I'd like to make the motion to prove the contract renewal with Airmac Correctional Services in the amount that exceeds $2 million, $10,000 for a three-year term expiring 6/30 of 2017.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any questions or discussions on this particular item?
Just as a little footnote here, this is for the meals for the inmates. I know in the past, we've actually done, meals are based on calorie counts when you bid these things out. You've got like 2,400 calorie, 2,600, 2,800. I know in the past, they've actually done some changes to this to reduce calorie count, reduce some of the things and believe it or not, the difference between a 2,400, 2,600 calorie count meal versus a 2,800 is a riot. Maybe the 2,400 is not the way to go, so it's very, very precise to give these more things here.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Tannen.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyden.
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko.
Yes.
Chairman Graytop.
Yes. Moving on to Item 11F, the Fiscal Year 2014 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program Application.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I would like to move the approval of the fiscal 2014 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of $11,729.
Support.
Motion to support. Any questions on that particular grant? It's one that we do every year. All right, no questions? Let's do a roll call vote.
Just a comment, there's no local match on that, so.
That is correct, there is no local match.
Commissioner Hyden.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman.
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Tannen.
Yes.
Commissioner Graytop.
Yes. 11G, 2015 Fiscal Year Michigan Health, Mental Health Court Grant Program Application and Proposed Budget.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to approve the three-year 2015 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program Application in the amount of $435,495.17.
Support.
I have a motion to support, questions or discussions on this grant?
Just heard this one, Steve, Steve deals court system all the time. This mental health court, there's only a handful of courts. I remember when we did the pilot program with a pilot project originally with this and Judge Thomasson has, you know, some experience in the community mental health background. How many courts, I mean, this is not many that had this.
Not many is probably a resource allocation issue, but the program itself, I'm using analogy of getting a square table or people with mental health issues don't belong in the criminal justice system. And what the mental health court does, it preserves people's problems, the criminal process, the respect of court system, it's intensive oversight, counseling, maintenance, intuitive, the right thing to do if a person suffered a medical illness, a road disability, who was handled in an appropriate fashion and who held incarceration, helped fund the problem, it was always, so I'd be supportive of that. And I don't know if the funding piece of it runs, when the state money would run out, are we, how much of it's funded by the county or is it the state? If it was 100% state, then that would be, that would be good.
Very good. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bowman.
Yes.
Commissioner Tannen.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyden.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Chairman Graytop.
Yes. Item 11I, Construction Contract Weston Transport Rehabilitation.
H.
I'm sorry, H. Patrol Vehicle Replacement Request.
Item H.
I would make the motion to approve the purchase of two patrol vehicles for the sheriff's apartment using funds from the revenue sheriff's department budget.
I have a motion and a second by Commissioner Semasko. Any discussion or questions? We hash this one out at the committee. Hearing none, a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyden.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman.
Yes.
Commissioner Tannen.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Chairman Graytop.
Yes. Item 11I, the Construction Contract Weston Transport Rehabilitation South Hangar Taxiway.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move that we approve the construction contract in for us with Weston Transport for the reconstruction of the South Hangar Area Taxiway in the amount of $370,300.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions on that construction hangar? Hearing none?
It must be valuable to let people know that much of the funding of this construction is federal government. It's about 90%.
Yeah, currently, if you're, if you're involved in an airport, at one time, federal government paid 95% of everything, the state paid two and a half, the local paid two and a half. The federal government has backed off, they're paying 90%, local pays five, and state pays five. There was some talk that the state wanted to get out of it completely, but I don't believe they have done that yet and they may not get out of it, which means that our costs didn't go from two and a half percent to 10%, which would be a huge jump, especially if you're talking about a $13 million runway or something along those lines, so we're kind of holding our own on that, so. Good point, Commissioner Hyden, thank you. Any other comments? Roll call?
Commissioner Tannen.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyden.
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman.
Yes.
Chairman Graytop.
Yes. Item J, 11J, the Design Engineering Agreement Mead and Hunt Taxiway JK and portion of the P Rehabilitation.
This time I'd like to move to approve the Design Engineering Agreement with Mead and Hunt for Rehabilitation of Taxiway JK and a portion of P in the amount of $36,643.
Second.
I have a motion to support, any discussion? All in favor, with a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyden.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Tannen.
Yes.
Chairman Graytop.
Yes. Moving on to Item K, MDOT Sponsored Contract Design of Rehabilitation of Taxiway JK and portion of P and the Air Industrial Park.
I would approve the Amendment Resolution 14, yeah, certainly approved the MDOT sponsor contract for the design of rehabilitation taxiways JK and.
Motion to support, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyden.
Yes.
Chairman Graytop.
Yes. That was K or L?
I would.
Item L is MDOT Sponsored Contract Reconstruction of South Hangar Way Area Taxiway. South Hangar Area Taxiway.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to the Amendment Resolution 1429 approving the MDOT sponsored contracts for the reconstruction of the South Hangar Area Taxiway in the amount of $430,000.
Support.
I have a motion to support. Any questions, discussions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hyden.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Tannen.
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Chairman Graytop.
Yes. Item 11M, the Lawn Mowing Agreement For closure Properties Treasurer.
This time I'd like to move to approve the agreement with John Soyko Contracting for Lawn Mowing Services in the amount not to exceed $25,000 expiring 10/31/2014.
Second.
Motion to support, discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bowman.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko. Commissioner Tommy.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyden.
Yes.
Chairman Greitner.
Yes. Item eleven N, um, vital records fee adjustment.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to approve the vital records fee adjustment as presented.
Support.
Motion to support, any discussion? Jay, was this one yours?
Yeah.
Do you want to say anything at all?
Sure, can you give me a comment?
Sure.
About this information?
Yeah.
I come to you through, um, Commissioner Kaufman, a few months ago, presented you a little bit of information with regard to the fact that file records, meaning birth, deaths, marriage licenses and such, have not been reviewed in about twelve years. And one of the things that I was concerned about, and I don't like that proof, because what happens is you get to a point where you realize how far behind the eight ball you are, and then you have to make a, uh, adjustment. Um, the state, for example, allows us to set our file record fees, they give us a number every year, uh, birth certificate's thirty-four dollars, uh, death certificate's thirty-four dollars. We are currently at ten dollars. Our marginal cost to produce that document in our office, with the labor that it takes to produce it, the paper that we use, because it is a specific security paper serial number, which is extremely expensive, our cost is, is about fifteen dollars to produce the document. Um, the statute provides for the fact that those dollars, you know, you're only supposed to charge what your cost is to do it, and those dollars are supposed to be designated to, um, operations for the file records. And, and actually, the legislation goes as far as to say, um, that that the money, um, are to be, are to be used for that, um, and that we can't charge additional. We've been at ten dollars since, uh, nineteen, no, I'm sorry, since two thousand and two, um, and I think it's time that we make a move just to cover those costs. As it stands right now, we're subsidizing birth certificates and death certificates, um, with taxpayer dollars right now, which the statute does specifically address, it says you're not really supposed to be, you're supposed to alleviate the burden on the taxpayer, and the, the cost of, of your or a certificate card is supposed to be borne by you. So, I brought this to you, uh, there's also one additional item on there, which we don't have currently at the county at any level, because it's a brand-new thing, it's an internet process fee. One of the things that we've done recently is we've put the ability to apply for marriage license online. The uniqueness of marriage licenses, under state statute, you have to make an application for a marriage license, you then have to come back three days later, I guess it's a cooling off period, uh, pick up your marriage license. Well, if you can imagine, if you live in Marine City, or if you live in Yale, you drive to Fort Huron, make the application, and three days later, you have to drive back to pick up your marriage license. Well, we've instituted the ability to make that initial application online. The beauty of that is, is instead of spending fifteen dollars in gas to drive to Fort Huron, from my old organic Marine City, Iowa Township, Yale, out on the western part of the county, um, you can apply it first time online. The other thing it does for us is, it eliminates, or doesn't eliminate, it reduces the number of individuals that we have to look at across the counter, meaning, we can service them when it fits our daily schedule versus when they walk in the door, which is very convenient for the operations in the office. We've had that in place for three weeks now, we've had over a hundred people use the online application, with nothing more than a small art, the time serial regarding it. So you can see there's a demand for it. Um, one of the things that I'm requesting is the, a five-dollar internet process fee. What that provides for, two things that I'm asking, one is more to do with accounting than with you, but there's a cost to manage that, and what I would like to do is I'd like to segregate that five dollar and put it in solely for the additional option of further items that we're going to put online, make it more user-friendly for the citizens throughout the county. Um, so those are the items that are on there, um, just to, to make you aware, the state charges twenty-two dollars and fifty cents in internet process fee to receive a birth certificate that they charge thirty-four dollars for, and I'm like, and I'd like to charge fifteen dollars for the birth certificate and five dollars for the internet process fee, so. A little bit of background, but if you have questions with regard to where we're headed or why, feel free.
Jay, are you under the state recommended figure on everything?
Absolutely, on less than half of the state recommended figure.
Okay, so what you're doing is you're trying to provide the service at the cost of the service and not to make money out of it.
That is correct.
Okay, questions for Jay?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I, I just wanted to, uh, remind everybody, the discussion at any level, it's not only the taxpayers that, uh, are not subsidizing these individual transactions, but a lot of these transactions, everyone who, who are in participation, Jay, are from people from out of state, so we're actually using, saying, look, how many taxpayers money to fund services for, not, or is it correct?
A, a vast majority, about fifty percent of our requests for birth certificates currently are done by mail, which are individuals that are not in, living in our county, so they're not only not a taxpayer, they're actually, they're getting a birth certificate for, for less than what it actually is costing them to produce it, while we as taxpayers in the county are funding the operation for them to do that. And I just want to get it to the right team, that's really where it needs to be at. Hasn't been addressed in twelve years.
Stephen.
Just want to make the comment that our county clerk gave where his interest in this area is, is, is great, and we bring that up to speed, he points out these control of your system, look at it, I'm in the clerk's office a lot, file cases, trying to read on state level, court appeals and federal system, um, and Jay and I have talked many times about this, there's a state interest also in, in bringing on board, uh, state electronic filing, so not only will the marriage license be on my Indian House or file case, I can do divorce out there. But the balance that we're putting out, and the ones that are used, the attorneys and the litigants, you can file it from your office, you can run down to the clerk's office and file it on that, pay by credit card or account, very, very seamless, you have a due date, it's a certain date, you can file the deed on it, uh, early, so it's a lot of real practical benefits that, I know Jay's interested, we've shared some stuff from the state bar, I've really looked at it, and I really appreciate his interest in that, so we're looking forward to that.
Very good. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Rushing.
So you can file electronically for divorce, is, is that on account that three-day, uh,
Exactly. I've got you on both ends, okay, from birth to death, and from marriage to divorce.
All right, anything else? All right, uh, did we get a motion yet on that?
We do.
All right, then, uh, let's do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Samasco.
Yes.
Commissioner Tommy.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyden.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman.
Yes.
Chairman Greitner.
Yes. Uh, go ahead.
Just one quick note, uh, we're, we're gonna, July one is the effective date, just so that's
If you want it, get it before July one, or it's going up.
Correct.
Very good. All right, let's go to eleven O, so you have to go back to your front sheet, uh, professional services agreement, Great Lakes Dock Endors for the Convention Center.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I, I agree that we approve this professional service agreement, and we'll apply it to them, um, not to exceed thirty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Second.
I have a motion to support, any questions on this particular contract? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Tommy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyden.
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco.
Yes.
Chairman Greitner.
Yes. Moving on to eleven P, uh, professional service agreement, uh, the Gardner Vos, panel partitions.
I would make the motion to approve the professional service agreement, Gardner C. Vos, in for panel partitions, for the Convention Center project in the amount not to exceed eighty-five thousand, one hundred dollars.
Support.
Okay, I have a motion to support, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Tommy.
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyden.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman.
Yes.
Chairman Greitner.
Yes. Um, last item on the new business is Q, Marine Safety Program Grant Application.
This time, uh, I would ask that we approve for the year two thousand fifteen Marine Safety Program Grant, three hundred and ninety, almost twenty thousand, five hundred dollars in motions.
Okay, I have a motion to support, and just to bring it to your attention, there is a, uh, local match of twenty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars in there, but it is included in the budget. Uh, also, I'd like just to make a note that, going all the way back to two thousand nine, this grant was two hundred and thirty thousand, and it has progressively dropped every year since then, to the point that it's down now to about, uh, seven, seven, twenty-five, you know, a little over a hundred thousand dollars, so, um, it keeps going down and down, and yet we keep running the votes here, we have probably more coastline than any other county in the state of Michigan to patrol, but somehow the sheriff gets it done. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
Commissioner Hyden.
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco.
Yes.
Commissioner Tommy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Chairman Greitner.
Yes. All right, administrators report. Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. I realize we need to get out of here by seven-thirty, I think, and stuff, so.
Next, next team comes in.
I cover everything.
Seven-thirty.
I'll, I'll try and pick out the biggest items. Every month, we talk a little bit about the Convention Center and what's going on, and as usual, the financial report is included in the, um, agenda packet, and consent, so if you have any questions about the financial report, please feel free to give me a call, and I'll be my best to answer any questions you may have. We've had, um, a lot of activity up at the Convention Center the last couple of weeks, and if you've noticed, there was some demolition that occurred, some walls that needed to come down, and we changed the configuration, reconstructed, footings and foundations have gone in for the event hall, which is, um, the large meeting area. That work, um, very soon will come to a close, the footing and foundations, and most of the work that you see, um, will be going on inside to renovate, and those portions of the existing building that were partially demolished, and so they will be reconstructed, the, um, probably the biggest, um, work that will be done will be in mid-August. That's when the, the large forecast, uh, panels are scheduled to be delivered to the site, and they will begin lifting them shortly after that, once they get up and steel for the roof, where we put in place, and the rest of it will come in very much like a director set, and then most of the work that will occur will be inside at that point. The project does remain on budget, and one of the reasons it remains on budget at this point is, we've got a team that has been assembled, and remember, there was a lot of discussion about the individual contractors that were hired, and in this particular case, this project, we decided to use a construction manager form of who unfolds, so what we have is a construction manager that is an advocate for you on the project, and they work with all the individual contractors. Normally, in projects, what the company has done is hired a general contractor, and that general contractor is the one person that oversees the entire project, and you've got one contract for construction. In this particular case, we've got, um, over a dozen individual contracts, in fact, we just approved two of them tonight for some of the specialty equipment that would be located out there. Our construction manager then works on a daily basis with each one of these contractors to ensure that they're working as efficiently as possible. One of the things that they constantly do is work for what's called value engineering. The contractors will use the experience that they may have, and what their employees may have, to like, take a look at the blueprints, and the architects and engineers who put together, and suggest ways of doing that work more efficiently. So one of the things that we've benefited, benefited from in this particular project is, um, a, a very significant amount of value engineering that has, um, been reviewed for deductions on the project, so we've seen some deductions in individual contracts. So what we're looking at is, if you remember when we started this project, um, there were a lot of questions, we've got a nine million dollar target, what if we want to change something, how are we going to do it, and the story that we've always told is, we use the analogy of building a home, that we build a home, that if we decide you want to upgrade, let's say, your kitchen, then you've got to find somewhere else in the home to try and find some reductions, so you could make that additional improvement, and that's exactly what's been going on. The, um, the contractor's team gets together every Tuesday morning and talks about their projects and where they're at, what would make their activity, and the, the construction manager works with them as well to try and find this value engineering. So as a result, the project has been moving along very smoothly so far, so you never know what can happen. So, so far, we've been doing very well, again, if you have any questions, let me know, if you would like to visit the site, um, please let me know, and we'll arrange to do so, remember, this is a construction site, we don't like people just showing up unannounced, um, if you're going to show up, we're going to make sure that proper safety equipment and contractors know where to be, where to look and where to run. Any questions regarding the Convention Center?
Commissioner Bowman?
I made a quick, uh, comment myself, um, Commissioner Tommy and Commissioner Riley met yesterday, two days ago? Two, two days. Kind of, we had, ended up meeting meetings, um, we, uh, sat down with everybody to review the change orders, those things, and, um, to the point, I think, I'm going to let Carl chime in and Tom chime in a little bit, but I think everybody, well, at least three of us feel very comfortable how it's being handled from the administration and, um, from the generals and those types of things. Carl, you've had a lot of experience, um, in particular building projects throughout your career, and I know your work with Build and Make, uh, policy changing, John, just some, uh, little tweet that we're going to see something that's going to come before us here at a later date, but.
I, I'd just say that, uh, first of all, um, I'm very impressed with the process that we're using, uh, very, various types of value engineering, but one of the concepts that's been employed by our construction manager, Orion, has after this, after the business, they've come in and rewarded the project in different disciplines, you know, instead of having one contractor, a general contractor, the individual contractors. What our construction manager has done is gone to each of those contractors and said to them, now, we have this price of the, this budget, but do you have any ideas about how to reduce our cost, whether through construction methods or alternative materials, or we can maintain the integrity of the project as designed, but reduce our cost further, and then go talk about the deductions that were discussed today as a result of that process, and it's, it's pretty intricate, because it involves them, it involves our on-site design professionals, as well as everybody in the administration, and I'm really pleased to, to see that, uh, we handle that way. And, uh, one of the things that needs to be done, though, is we've adopted this, uh, construction change work committee system, and, uh, if you read that policy closely, which we will be updating in the future, you know, you can see that it was designed for only a general contractor type of construction, and so we need to modify that policy so that we can use it more effectively in construction.
And just when you talk about changes to the contract, I just want to chime in, it's not like they're changing the design, you know, moving walls, doing this type of thing, the ceiling tiles is a great example, they were able to source the same ceiling tile through a different supplier, and there was essentially a ten thousand dollar savings, you know, through the whole thing, so, so, when they, when they get into those, those are the types of little tweaks that we're talking about.
And what, what happens is you have your design professional who comes up with the specifications for all of these materials, but after it's been, it's been awarded, when you actually talk to the contractors whose specialty it is building these types of systems, they have many ideas about, you know, supply and demand, different materials in the marketplace, and how they can actually build it cheaper than, than, than they specified, and I, I think we're doing a really good job of watching the dollars on the project.
Mr. Riley, did you have something?
Yeah, I think, uh, agreeing with, uh, Carl saying, the thing that impressed me a little bit was the, uh, general contractor making comments, uh, the, uh, one of the things I was really pushing for is to get as many local contractors as possible, and we ended up with, I believe, around fifty-four percent local contractors, but the comment that the general made that I, that really sat well with me is, he said, a lot of times you get a big project like this, you have general contractors, and you have the, these locals, and that they kind of bang heads, and they don't want to move, he said, the, the cooperation with all the people up there is really going over well, and he said, that's the reason that we're moving along so well up there, everybody's agreeing, and they're working together. So, it's, uh, actually, it rolled along well, and of course, the balance, and the thing I do like is at the meetings, so we can look at, uh, the pros and the cons, and the, uh, this might be an addition, but also, here we got some deletions on costs, so, uh, I, it was, as far as I'm concerned, a very good meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Samasco?
Comment I think is that we have to see that this bill is on budget, and it's got the flexibility to allow the things like this value engineering, because I'm hoping it changes the legacy, because in the community, at least out around there, I can't tell you how many times people referred back to the old jail building, and how decommissioned, did a bad job, like, it's the same commission, and I put it on a number page, and says, our, uh, day three of the night watch center, the building on time, on budget without issues, no one cares about it, it doesn't change the legacy. I'm hopeful that the newspaper will crank some of what you're saying, and, and if this comes in on track, as it appears it will, I'm hoping it changes the legacy, because that is a legacy for this board, as opposed to the previous boards, and it shows good service to the community, it just seems so hard to change that perception, because it was such a terrible circumstance, that jail building, it just seemed to.
Just, just to echo yours, I've been involved in probably five projects that involve in five million dollars plus after the jail situation, and, um, the jail happened pre-meeting on board, and I've been on board ten years now, and, um, so, you, you, those aren't the, still.
An example, the article Yale gave for Yale's positive, with the address, oh, like, the jail building, this is a decade ago, you know, and we built so many things, you know, we built the other projects on budget and on time, or no, it's like they don't want to talk about it, so I'm hoping it changes the legacy, good as well around the building, you get a lot of credit for that, and this board for putting the right piece. of credit for that, and this work for putting the right pieces in place, so that it does get built on time, on budget, with the flexibility to get economies and savings to be built. So I think that's a good...
I would just echo Commissioner Samasko's. I'm new to the board, and one of the things that the board has emphasized too is, you hire consultants first to look at the business aspect of the Convention Center, then, you know, national experts in it, and then national experts on how it has to be designed and what the important components are. And the boards are very active in reviewing the design and the punches at the Convention Center, making sure that we're employees under best consultants to recommend these, recommend these items that make the Convention Center successful. Now, we're following through on all of their recommendations.
Very good. Back to the administrator then.
Okay, I'm going to skip through a page and a half of the book and show notes that I had, and just get to the point. One of the issues that we've talked a little bit about is the change order committee and the change order policy that the board has in place. We're going to be presenting some changes to that policy in July. One of the reasons is, we have a lot of this value engineering that's coming forward. Currently, your policy requires that, even if it's a deduction in the project, we still have to go to the same process as if it were an addition. I would like some relief, immediate relief tonight, some authorization from you, that if we have a deduction in a contract with a particular vendor, that that be approved internally, administratively, by the project design folks, the engineer and the architect, to ensure that not compromising the design and the safety by the construction manager and by the administrative controllers office.
Do you want to vote on that motion tonight?
I'd like to move that deductions in the Convention Center project process not be subject to our change order committee process, provided that those who's changed are approved by our construction manager, our design professional, as well as our company that's supported.
Okay, I have a motion to support. Question, gentlemen? Commissioner Rushing?
I know you want it done tonight. I'd like to have a little bit more information on this to add to the vote tonight, because if there's something going to be involved, it's going to devalue the Convention Center just because it's a loss of money savings item. With us not seeing it, I just want to...
Talk about...
Just wait till the committee meeting.
We're talking about if there's a hundred-dollar change item on it. I'm seriously, like, if a guy's moving a box and there's a hundred-dollar deduction.
Is there a maximum that you wouldn't have tuned over? If it's a hundred thousand, are you still going to do it?
Commissioner Samasko?
I put a caveat, so long as it does not, does not change the specifications for the project. As long as the specs remain the same, it's costly, I don't see other reason not, that doesn't change the specification for design. Can I move to add that to Colonel's motion here, accept that?
I would accept it. And one of the points we need to make here is that if we make this process so bureaucratic, we're not going to realize some of the savings we're going to make. We're not going to take the time to recommend these savings to you, because you guys take too long to consider all this stuff. You take it to a committee, it's got to go to another committee, it's got to go to a board. We got to get this project built.
Commissioner Tommy, did you put the caveat? Did you agree to the caveat?
Yeah.
That I would, yes.
And the second also? Okay, any other comments?
Could I ask? Go ahead. Did you put a maximum dollar for the...
Max for savings?
Well, I'm going to say, if it's two-hundred thousand dollars, that's something substantial from what we forecasted. I don't know if you'd be comfortable, I don't know if you're going to see a savings like that.
Does that get in the way of what you want to do?
I don't want to devalue the Convention Center.
A cap of two-hundred thousand dollars, I think, would...
I'm happy to stay mad on that.
To me, it doesn't make sense, that we take out the, to save, if there's a savings, a hundred is a dollar, it's still a value, and it doesn't change...
A hundred dollars, I got no problem.
One more quick question. Commissioner Hyden.
Not really a question, but I concur with Commissioner Rushing from the standpoint, I would like to be informed about, at the next regular meeting, the next committee meeting, I would just like to be informed what the deductions were and the amounts. I'm not asking for the number to be put in here, but I'd like to be informed about the surveillance.
Okay, any other comments? All right, is it a roll call? Yeah, let's make a roll call. Commissioner Samasko?
This is Carl's motion with my caveat.
Carl's motion with your caveat.
Not the two-hundred thousand.
Not the two-hundred thousand, yes. Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Commissioner Hyden?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Tannen?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Chairman Gray. Yes. Back to the administrator. You're done. We're done with that. Under miscellaneous business, I have one quick item I want to announce. This Saturday, from eight-thirty to ten o'clock at the Clay Township offices, Senator Pavlo is holding a town hall meeting, and it's aimed at, excuse me, discussing and taking input from the citizenry regarding the nuclear waste repository in Kincarton, Ontario. So if you have any interest in learning more about it, or you want some input, or you want to say some things, eight-thirty to ten o'clock at the Clay Township Hall. I've been told coffee and donuts are going to be available, if that helps you get up on a Saturday morning.
They go in the dark.
They do go in the dark. Anything else, gentlemen, because we're kind of squeezed into...
Yes, I'll make it quick. Our next meeting, scheduled July 3rd, it's a Thursday, everybody's got the Fourth of. Can we move that up a date, a day, do it maybe on the second?
Is that a motion?
Are you guys, are you guys available for the second?
I am.
I am. That's, there's fireworks and...
How about the first?
First is good.
Do they have one of the other town?
Works for me.
How about being on the...
I'd rather, I'd like to be here, because I got one of my issues regarding...
So do we want to bump it then until July 10th, and just do it July 10th, and then do the following after?
Who is the conference?
Two people are gone.
I do. I, I...
No, no, let me get a date here quick, and is it the 10th then, the 10th? Who's going to be gone on the 10th?
I am.
So we're going to be...
I should, I might be gone on the 10th, too.
Oh, great. Let's pick a date, and roll with it. I know we've got a lot...
Let's go back to July 2. How many people cannot be here on July 2? We got five there.
All right, let's do it on July 2nd.
Okay, are you going to motion somebody?
I will. Sure will.
Motion to support to meet on July 2 as opposed to July 3. All in favor?
Aye.
I want to say thank you very much to the Marine City people for hosting us tonight. John, your presentation was very, very good, very informative. Excuse me, sir? Yes, we're going to do that, but I wanted to get that in before, because once you do that, we jump. All right, go ahead. Support. Motion to support, all in favor?
Aye.
Pass. Motion to adjourn.
Will be adjourned.
All in favor?
Aye.
We hope you enjoyed this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. Your St. Clair County Commissioners broadcast these meetings on Comcast Local Access Channel 12 every Wednesday night at 9:00 PM.